Call to me in order, roll call.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mrs. Kratz.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Penarello.
Here.
All present.
We go to our rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board had no previous executive session. At this time, we'll be going with recognition showcase.
Good evening, and welcome to all of our viewers this evening on our stream and those here in person. Good evening to the board. My name is Dr. Scott David Heiser, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 25th legislative meeting of the Board of School Directors. So, we're going to begin with a little bit of a plug, but an advertisement to our upcoming Middle School East, who is celebrating an anniversary, a 50th anniversary. So, I'd like to invite Mr. Maori to the podium for his remarks and presentation, and a little bit of selfless plug in regards to this anniversary celebration.
That's a good way to put that. Thank you, Dr. David Heiser. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to come up and kind of follow up on the teaser that we gave in the fall when you were over at East. We mentioned that we were recognizing the 50th year of operation of Middle School East, and this has truly turned into a fun, big, community event that we have planned on April 10th. So, we try to do a lot of pieces here. We wanted to include our current students and their experiences and what's going on in our school, along with our current staff and former staff members, as well as our alumni. So, we think we've done a solid job of bringing all those parts together and organizing a pretty eventful and memorable evening for this community. And this has not happened without a lot of work from our teachers and from district members, and we are excited to present the 50 years of Middle School East to you all. So, before giving you a little bit more of a detailed overview, if I can direct your attention to our screen, and before we hit play, I just want to say that this idea came from our committee of teachers who have been organizing and working very hard in this celebration. And one of the ideas that came up for a momento was to get all of our students, all of our staff, out there and do an aerial photo and an aerial video commemorating this experience. And with the help of Mr. Chikaski and the high school AV crew, a lot of organizing, a lot of discussions, support from our athletics department, and as well as our facilities department, who brought out our robo-liner to help us make this neat and organized, we were able to accomplish this feat. And if I could have now Ms. Moyer, if you could click the video and you could see what we put together here. So, our students did a fantastic job. We had about over 900 people go out on the field and get this done within about 25 minutes, and it turned out pretty sharp. And I may be a little biased, but I think that's going to make a nice momento that we have displayed in the East hallways for the next 50 years. And I did not know what an impact this would have on our students. We hope that would be a fun, good thing that they'd look forward to. I can't tell you how many calls or after feedback I got from different families when we didn't pre-announce this. I mean, it's not good practice to announce you're taking everybody out into a public space prior to time. So, we got calls afterwards of saying, hey, you know, my kid asked me to change their doctor's appointment because you're doing some pictures. Is this real? Actually, I did get one of those before, and then several follow-up. And I was like, yeah, you know, and this was, I mean, literally about four or five, I think, that I know of, where students were changing their schedules because they wanted to be a part of this. So, we're pretty happy that we pulled that off. And if we go to the next slide, you'll be able to see an overview of what we are calling it an open house. So, we don't have things necessarily organized, having people to follow a structure throughout the entire two hours of the evening, but we do have some events that are taking place during the time that people can choose to go to or not. So, again, this is going to be on Thursday, April 10th. We're starting off, and the doors are opening up at 5:45. We're starting off at 6 o'clock in the auditorium with a few remarks. The NJRTC is going to present the colors, a few opening remarks from some local dignitaries, and then we will talk briefly about what is out and about in the building that night. So, you can see up there, at different times during the evening, we'll have some performances that are going on from our orchestra, show choir, and jazz band. We are having some old planetarium shows led by Mr. Dedeline. We have three of those scheduled throughout the evening, if anybody would like to jump in and see those. We have some current student organizations doing their thing that night, such as YAG, as they prepare for their state competition a couple of weeks from now in Harrisburg. They'll be there brushing up on their routine. We will have our TSA rooms open, and folks will be able to see what currently is going on in TSA, as well as we'll have on display some of the latest technological tools and resources that we're using in the schools, so those who maybe graduated 20, 25 years ago can see what's happening in our building these days. We also have, of course, the flashback to the old. There are going to be multiple flat panels throughout the building that are going to be displaying pictures, artifacts, videos, things that have occurred over the 50 years in East. In the PE department, we'll have, it's very funny to see some of the older types of activities that were going in our PE classes compared to what we're offering today, bringing back some of the FCS and world language examples of what's happening in the auditor, excuse me, in the cafeteria. We will have responses from alumni who answered our question of, where are you now? And those displays will be on site for everybody to see, organized by decade. You move into the library, you'll have a lot of artifacts from yearbooks and newspapers and other, again, these artifacts that have been accrued over the years. There is, there'll be some light refreshment served, so we know that's always a draw for some of our folks. So, we hope that you, we hope that our community comes out and celebrates the greatness that's been East for the past 50 years. And Board members, please, if you, I have heard from some of you, and we have our designated parking spots ready for you, we're expecting a large crowd, so if you do intend to come, please just let us know, and we'll make sure we save a parking spot for you. And we are asking those who are planning to come, if you are coming with friends or family members, might want to think about carpooling. We don't have the high school-sized parking lot. We have a middle school-sized appropriate lot, but we're opening up this community. Who knows how many folks are going to be showing up, and we want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to pop in and walk the halls and relive some memories. Are there any questions you may have that could answer? Mr. Zawada? We do not have open classrooms anymore. Those are gone, so are the pits.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maori, and please mark your calendars for April 10th at 6 o'clock to take a look and celebrate the anniversary of Middle School East. All right, it takes us to public comment, or excuse me, Student Representative Report.
Good evening, Board members and meeting attendees. We are excited to bring you updates from across the district, including highlights from elementary, middle, and high school events this month.
This past weekend, Middle School West students took the stage in Disney's Newsies Junior. After months of rehearsals, the cast and crew delivered an incredible performance, bringing energy, talent, and dedication to every scene. From lead roles to the ensemble, each student played a vital role in making the show a success. Performances ran from March 21st to March 23rd. We are so proud of everyone involved for their hard work and commitment to the production.
In exciting sports news, the high school men's wrestling team took fourth place in team states with three individuals qualifying for individual states. Congratulations to J.D. Heiser, Beck Bab, Brody Coleman on this achievement. In flag football news, our women's flag football team had their first game against O.N.J. Roberts School last week. One member of the team said that her experience on the flag football team has provided her with a new opportunity to get involved at the high school. She is looking forward to continuing strengthening her bond with the team as the season progresses. We are excited to support the team for the remainder of the season, and congrats on both of their wins.
In STEM news, Mr. Pennington's BASH TSA group competed in the Governor's STEM competition and has been named finalists for the state of Pennsylvania. After securing third place in state last year, the team has continued their hard work, and we are excited to see how they perform in the final round. Mr. Pennington predicted that they would be strong contenders for the top spot, and we have no doubt that their hard work will pay off.
Looking ahead, we're excited to announce an upcoming event to support our student athletes. The Boyertown High School Golf Team's scramble golf outing will take place on Friday, June 13th, 2025, at Hickory Valley Golf Course in Gilbertsville. Golfers can participate for $100 per player or 400 per foursome, which includes a cart and lunch. This event will feature on-course contests, prizes, and a 50-50 raffle, with awards for both individual contests and top team in the scramble. For those interested in playing or in sponsoring the event, please contact Coach John Hagman, Coach Joe McClelland, or Coach Scott Rath for more details. Payments can be made to the Hickory Valley Golf Club. We hope to see you there.
This month, we're featuring New Hanover Elementary. New Hanover was buzzing with excitement as students participated in special literacy events, guest read-alouds, engaging activities. They showcased their musical talents and recent performances and had the opportunity to dive into hands-on STEM projects. A thank you to Mr. New Hanover's principal, Mr. Roan, for sharing these exciting updates.
In other STEM news, Middle School West's math counts team is headed to states in Harrisburg. Last month, they placed first in the 42nd Annual Math Counts Competition, with Boyertown Middle School East finishing second, and Wilson Middle School following in third. Congratulations to the coaches and students for their success.
We look forward to bringing you more of BASH's best moments, as well as highlights from Washington Elementary next month. Have a great evening.
Thank you. There's no one signed up for public comment period number one, so at this time, we're looking for the approval of the March 11th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
I was absent.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us down to item seven, item A, Special Education Plan Presentation this evening. We have a short, brief presentation. I'm going to invite Ms. Kailin Bartman to the podium to explain a little bit about the special ed presentation plan and its requirements every three years under school code. So, Mrs. Bartman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate you having us here tonight to talk about our special education plan. Before we get started, I do want to make some introductions to some people that we have out here in the audience that are really vital to our special education department. So, first, we have Mrs. Stacy Morton. She is the transition coordinator that works in our department. Next, we have Mr. John Otto, who is our elementary supervisor of special education. Next, we have Mrs. Colleen Ritter. She is a secondary liaison in our special education department. Next, we have Mrs. Jackie Carney. She is our elementary liaison. And then, we have our BCBA, our Board Certified Behavior Analyst, Ms. Sarah Jones. And we also have Ms. Jessica Cunningham, who is our secondary supervisor of special education. So, John, Jess, if you want to. So, some of us are participating in the presentation. So, first of all, to get started with the presentation, if you want, thank you. Special education plan is required every three years to be written by the district and to get participation from various stakeholders. It is outlined in Chapter 14 Regulations. So, the next part that we are going to go through are the special education plan parts. So, there are many parts to the special education plan, and we're going to take you through just to explain a little bit about each of those parts. So, the first one is the Profile Plan and Essentials. That includes the name of the superintendent, the name of the director, the number of students that are receiving special education, and then the total enrollment. The next section is our Steering Committee, so all of the people that helped us to create this plan. As I said, the members that I introduced to you when I started this presentation, they were vital in creating this plan. And then, we also held a meeting on March 14th with various stakeholders. Mr. Zawada joined us at that meeting. We also had parents from every level. We also had administration there. We had regular ed teachers. We had special education teachers. Mr. Stout joined us as well. So, we had a really great meeting to focus on different parts of the special education plan. Three of the parts that we focused on during that time were least restrictive environment. We also focused on trainings and then positive behavior supports. The next part of the plan is the school district areas of improvement and planning. So, in this section of the plan, there are various indicators that we provide data, and then we have to meet the state requirement for those indicators. So, a few of them, graduation rate, dropout rate, participation and performance of children with IEPs on statewide assessments, and then educational environment. As I said, we collect the data, and then we're compared to the state to see, have we met that indicator? The second part of that comes down to our compliance monitoring improvement plans. So, every six years, we are compliance monitored by the state, and then we create improvement plans to continually get better as a department. The next part is the identification method. You have to outline how you are identifying students with a specific learning disability. And here in Boyertown, we use the discrepancy model.
These next two sections impact Boyertown, but not as directly as they would some other school districts. For non-resident student oversight, sometimes there may be what's called a residential treatment facility that resides in a school district boundary. Boyertown does not have a school district or a residential facility like that within district, but in the situation where we may have students who are placed in a residential treatment facility, the host school district that that building resides in is responsible for making sure that they get their IEP goals or IEP services and accommodations met. Sometimes, we enter what's called an inter-LEA agreement. The incarcerated student oversight is the same thing. We don't have a juvenile detention center within our district, but the same principles apply, that if there were one, sometimes we would service those kids, but we don't have that here in Boyertown. So, the next term is least restrictive environment, which is probably one of the buzzwords that you're common with in special education. I liken to look at least restrictive environment as the spectrum, whereas the least, least restrictive environment would be a regular ed student just participating in the general ed curriculum, and all the way on the other side would be a student who may need to be educated within their home. We have students who are all along that spectrum. There's a lot of things that go into least restrictive environment that the IEP teams discuss. A lot of times, when we're discussing interventions, whether it's a reading intervention, behavior intervention, anytime we add something like a paraprofessional, those things restrict the environment. So, when we're looking at least restrictive, where's that sweet spot that we can service that child without over-providing and under-providing?
Next, we look at the positive behavior supports that we have in place. So, some of the things that we already have in place are that we conduct functional behavior assessments for students if they are engaging in some challenging behaviors in order to identify the function of those behaviors. And if it's needed, looking at those behaviors and identifying why the child is engaging in those behaviors, we can create what's called a positive behavior support plan. And it's really a roadmap for teachers to try to decide, like, what can we put into place for the student to help decrease those difficulties? What skills do they need to build, or what skills do we need to teach them to replace some of those behaviors that the students are engaging in? So, some of the schools also have school-wide positive behavior plans. So, some of the schools use, like, United Tickets, where students can earn certain privileges or certain things. The kids really like buying in, and it gives them a chance to be rewarded and get that good reinforcement for those skills that they are displaying already. So, some of the other things we already have is school-based counseling. So, some students need someone to talk to, to work on with those coping skills, or just to talk to with things going on in their life. So, we do offer some school-based counseling for students already. During our Steering Committee, a lot of the people that were there really mentioned over and over again that they really would like to see school-wide social skills and coping skills. They really felt that that was a need going forward, that something that we don't currently have. So, more of a tier one, if you're looking at, like, the multiple tiers supports. That's something that every kid would get, being able to, like, learn those skills, that they have that in their toolbox already. So, then, if they're starting to engage in some behaviors, they already have those tools in their toolbox, they don't need to then start engaging in those behaviors, or they might not need more intensive supports down the line because they've already gotten some skills. Another thing that was brought up repeatedly was that we need more de-escalation training for staff. Some staff feel like they have a little bit of knowledge, but they could use more or refreshers, or just more updated training and continuous training, how to deal with some students when they are having a hard time in school.
All right, so our next section here is intensive inter-agency, and this is kind of looking at when you have students, can they come into the district? And they might have more needs than the public school can kind of meet. So, in this situation, it kind of is us in collaboration with another agency like the IU to best support their programming and what that might look like. The next section is the education program profile. This outlines teacher caseloads. So, we have learning support teachers, emotional support, autistic support, life skills, as well as our speech providers who carry caseloads. So, that's outlined in our education program, as well as our special education facilities. So, that's outlining, you know, where that instruction takes place within all of the buildings in Boyertown School District. And then, for special education support services, that is kind of outlining people that support special ed that don't carry a caseload. So, essentially, everybody here tonight from our special ed team kind of presenting, but we support either, you know, teachers will be in meetings, supporting programming, and kind of having those pieces in terms of our special education development. And then, our last piece here is our personnel development, so our professional development. So, as it's been mentioned, we did meet and talk about as a group kind of what that could look like here at Boyertown. So, in our special education plan, we have outlined what we'd like to focus on, which is autism training, positive behavior support, professional, paraprofessional, transition, science of literacy, parent training, and then IEP development. And our Steering Committee, that was a really great, you know, feedback for us because it then did help us as we looked forward to planning our professional development moving forward. Some of the feedback that we had from our Steering Committee was, again, as Sarah mentioned, that de-escalation techniques to the entire staff, that was something that we kind of heard universally. Another was parent involvement. So, how can we just communicate more with our families regarding resources and strategies available? And then, also, para, more specific training. Right now, a lot of the trainings occur through CRESTLA, which is the agency that we partner with. How can we also then kind of lead some trainings to support our paras that are in our district?
And then, the very last section of the special education plan is some assurances, affirmations, and then we have to have the Board President and the Superintendent sign that document. So, our special education plan will be posted. It actually is posted. Mrs. Moyer did that right before this meeting started. It has to sit on the screen. It says 30 days, but it actually only has to sit for 28 days for public review. So, feel free to go to the website, open it up, take a look. If they have any questions, please feel free to reach out. And then, it is officially due to the state by May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bartman. So, for the Board, what we will do in this week's weekly report, we will attach that plan, that official plan, for you. It will also be placed on our Committee of the Whole Meeting on the, at the April 11th or April 8th meeting. Mrs. Bartman will be here after reviewing things for a couple of weeks. If you have any more questions, we can respond to those questions at that point. And then, at the, excuse me, at the, at the March, or at the April Legislative Meeting, we will place that on for a recommendation for approval of the Board, and that should satisfy the requirements. We'll have sat then in public display for over 28 days at that point in time. Okay? Mrs. Nyman?
Can the state reject this plan that you have?
They will probably provide us some feedback. I, in my years of doing this, I've been the director for quite some time now, they have never rejected it, but they have provided some feedback and maybe some suggestions on things they'd like to see within the plan, and then we make those corrections or fixes and get it back to the state.
Thank you. Thank you, team.
Next, we have the finance report. We have a snapshot of the general fund up.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting a few highlights from the February 2025 Treasurer's Report. Under local revenue, delinquent tax collection was $31,169.15. Earned income tax was $373,784.44. Transfer tax collection was $85,248.56. For state revenue, our basic education subsidy was $2,806,152. Our pre-K count subsidy was $96,750. And our social security subsidy was $499,678.88. Total revenue collected for February was approximately $4,345,080, excuse me, $5,080.94. And in the category of expenditures, the salaries, benefits, and professional services accounted for 82% of the total expenses for this month. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we're looking for a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the Superintendent's itemized agenda, we have a number of items for your consideration this evening. We'll begin with item A. This is the 2024-2025 IDAB agreement with the BCIU, and the administration does recommend approval of this agreement with the IU in the amount of just over $1.4 million to be used for special education services in this current fiscal year.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item B, STEEL's Elementary Curriculum Resource Recommendations, the administration does seek approval for the STEEL's Elementary Curriculum Resource Recommendations as presented at our last Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item C, IT Capital Projects, administration does seek approval of the IT capital projects as presented at our recent Committee of the Whole Meeting, and again, these are from, out of our capital reserve.
Penarello moves.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item D, Boyer Town YMCA Before and After School Program Lease Agreement for the 25-26 school year. Administration does recommend approval of the YMCA program for the 2025-26 school year as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item E, Solicitor Appointment for the Fiscal Year 2025-26. Administration does recommend approval of the Solicitor Appointment for the 2025-26 as presented at the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I'll second.
Any questions? Can we question?
Yeah, questions, of course.
Can we get a reduced rate for seniority time with you?
Who's senior?
That would be you.
There are laws against being discriminatory toward us older individuals. And the answer to your question is a direct no.
I figured so.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item F, Student Overnight Trips. There are three separate trips listed there, and which were presented at our committee of the whole meeting. Administration does recommend approval of the three overnight trips listed.
A question on the youth in government. It says that four staff and 68 students, but it has down for seven substitutes.
Yeah, that, that, I will need to check on that with regard to that and get some information back to the board. That probably does include some ancillary positions such as nurse. And I will need to check on what the other two positions would be that would be going on that.
It says four staff going.
Correct.
We have seven substitutes coming.
Correct. I need to check on why. Yes.
Wouldn't the nurse and whatever else be included in what's going?
When this is listed as staff, I think this might just be referring to those individual teachers. I think some of these may be some other ancillary positions inside of that. I'll need to get the info. I don't have the answers for you tonight. I can get those to you by tomorrow.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item G, Washington Elementary School Donation. Administration is recommending the approval of the elementary school donation. If you recall, there was a presentation made at Washington two weeks ago at the Committee of the Whole Meeting reflecting this math of literacy collection.
I'll second.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item H, Middle School East Boyer Town Bear Donation. It is recommended to the board for approval, the ceramic Boyer Town Bear Donation from the Sowers family, as was presented at the last committee of the whole meeting.
Panarello moves.
Second.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item I, First Reading of Policy 006. This is the recommendation of administration for approval for Policy 006 meetings. If you recall, this includes the committee meetings in language inside of this policy.
Panarello moves.
Yeah, Ms. Dieroff?
I don't think it should be in there that a board member only has three minutes to speak, because you're giving the public three minutes. We're board members. We're elected officials. I think if we want to talk more than three minutes, we should be allowed to. I don't like that in there.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
No, I thought we'd have a discussion too, when you have a complaint. But I guess I was wrong. Thank you.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Are we making a change on that, or is it still four minutes?
There's no change.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item J, First Reading of Policy 815.1. This is the use of generative artificial intelligence in the education. And administration is recommending approval of a, of the policy 815.1 for first read as presented at our last committee of the whole meeting.
Zawada moves.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Nyman.
Are we making any changes to that with the email that we got?
It is not suggested at this time that any changes be made to the policy as presented to it. Those suggestions to any policy changes are more in line with administrative regs and other administrative items that we would do once the policy is approved.
Last week, it was mentioned that, and I'm sorry, I can't maybe, if you know this policy a little better, you can find it. I, I'm looking for where we're going to be monitoring this AI at least twice a year, checking. Is that somewhere in here? Did we, did we make that change?
That, that is not placed into the policy. That's what we want to, we need to place into administrative regulations once the policy is created. We start to get into the constructs of then, all the things that we want to add in here.
Okay.
Outside of that, we start to get into having to really change policy more often than policy should be changed.
Okay.
So therefore, keeping it a little bit more broad and giving direction in policy is one thing. And then, once the policy has been created, allowing for those administrative regs and other things that we would be including in things like student handbooks, communication systems, and things like that to announce what it is we're doing with the policy.
Okay. So how about when you run into biases with AI? Is that, is that the, the administrative regulations, or that's all going to kind of fall under there, and the train, the professional development type trainings?
Correct.
And, okay. All right.
Do you have another question, Ms. Nyman? Mr. Brad Updegrove? Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
I'm going to vote yes at this point, but I'm going to hope that those regulations spill out, spell out a lot of those suggestions that were in that note.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item K, we have personnel, and the administration recommends approval of personnel listed inside of the agenda.
Panarello moves.
I'll second.
I have some concerns in the personnel. I'm hearing some things that do not make me happy about people not working their four hours, or eight hours, or whatever it is. And hearing that some administrators know about it.
Well, being as personnel, I don't know what it is you're, you're speaking of. If you have more details that we need to know, then we're going to need to take a recess and speak of that, about that in executive session.
I will try to make an appointment with Mr. Hahn to make sure what I'm hearing is accurate. And if it is, we have serious problems.
I would suggest that you include myself in that meeting as well.
Hold up. Do those accusations have anything bearing on this agenda? These people on this agenda? Is this someone we need to break for?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Then continue.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
I'm going to vote yes at this point.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Ms. Dieroff.
There's one item we forgot was, wasn't brought up tonight. There's one item that was not brought up tonight under financial report A. Sir Reason?
I did mention it. There's, we don't ever read it at the thing, at the thing. We just added it, so that people could see it.
So you don't even mention it?
I did mention it.
I mean...
Yeah, I read it. I said, we also have the Snapchat up there. No one signed up for public comment period number two, so this time it's board comment. Ms. Updegrove?
No comment.
Ms. Nyman?
I've been doing a lot of thinking about the Dee Healy, and whatever their name is now, I don't. And nothing against Mr. Shiel, but we need somebody there to look after Boyer Town's interest. And I don't think we're going to have that with Dee Healy. Dee Healy's going to come back and talk to Mr. Shiel, and all he's going to do is come right to us and say, they need this, this, or that. There's going to be nobody protecting our interests in that. And that concerns me. $15 million project, and we don't want to have oversight on that.
You will have oversight on that. We have that expertise inside the district. You are hiring, if you so choose to move forward with an agreement with, with Dewey. You're moving forward with an, a, an outside firm who is protecting your best interests as a school district, along with working with the school district and its director of facilities, and bringing back all that information to the board to be updated regularly and noted whenever, whenever there's going to be any types of change orders, or any issues related to the project itself. So the, your agreement with, with, your movement into an agreement with Dewey would allow for a couple of different things. Them acting as really, in your best interest as a school district, and working as a client, and allowing them to procure the design of that, to walk through the, as a construction management firm, then walk through the entire bidding process, and working with the district, assigning, and giving insight into those bids, and the work then, in terms of who you decide, or if you decide to move forward with the project, and working with the district throughout the multiple years that are there. That's why we have a director of facilities, and that's why you engage with an outside entity to work through, to add additional experience. All the difficulties and end or issues related to that will be discussed openly with you as a board back here in this meeting room, in order to move the project forward, and for you as a board to unilaterally make the ultimate decisions on certain items.
Who in the district has the experience? Mr. Shiel does not have the experience.
We don't know that anybody is ever going to have ultimately all the experience necessary for those things. That's why you engage with an outside contractor. In order for them to allow that expertise in the items that you're seeking at Boyer Town Elementary School, you engaged with them to do an investigation, to bring back their, their thoughts and ideas and evaluations. And you're now going to be moving forward and considering whether or not you want to work with them in the role of design and construction, and their expertise to bring back that information and knowledge. And yes, you do have institutional knowledge here and within that department. And ultimately, like I said, it ultimately does come back and get re-explained here to the board through many different types of processes.
Well, I guess I'm just going to go on the record then as being opposed to this, because I have concerns. $15 million is a lot of money. And we need somebody looking out for Boyer Town, not for Dee Healy, for Boyer Town.
And I would just say that you're, in, in this role that you're seeking, you're, whether it's Dewey you move into an agreement with, or someone else, you're still going to need to partner with some other type of outside organization. And I'm not sure if you're suggesting that we also then hire an additional organization to work with whomever you, you enter into an agreement with, on top of our own director of facilities. So that, to me, that sounds a little bit more than is needed in a project like this, since they are working as a client in your best interest, and certainly working with the director of facilities and with administration in the best interest of, of the district. And you will be apprised as a board, you know, through monthly meetings, as to updates on the project and its progress along the way. So our plan will be to, and we did delay bringing that agreement to you this evening, because it was still being looked at by the legal services on both the district side and on Dewey's side. We will bring that to you. We do have that finalized. We'll bring that to you at the Committee of the Whole Meeting in April for further discussion. And Dewey will be on hand to answer any questions that you do have with regard to the processes.
Thank you to Allison and Liana for their, presenting their student board report. And also, I just wanted to thank everyone that was involved with Once Upon a Mattress and Newsies Junior. Thank you for sharing your talents with the Boyer Town community.
I did want to talk a little bit about the budget. I'm having, I'm struggling with that, because I know everyone on this board is wanting our students to achieve. And a few meetings back, I asked the question, were the 24 paras that we didn't hire that were on the last budget, are they on this new budget? And I was told no. So that means, have we stopped hiring paras? Are we going to help these larger classes? I think because...
I think because of all the things that we do now as a school and because we have 22% of our students that have some sort of IEP, our classrooms that tend to be more than over 18 to 20 students are going to have maybe five or six or 10 students in there where the teacher has to change their curriculum a little bit or whatever they have to do. I can't imagine that as a classroom with over 20 students, a teacher can handle that well. And it has to be frustrating for them. It has to be frustrating for the students that do know the material. It has to be frustrating for those that can't catch it because they don't have that extra help in the classroom. I know some do, but if we have just decided that with this budget, we're not going to make allowances for that one, I know we have larger elementary classes, not all of them, but there are some that are larger and not all of them have PARRIS. It's very frustrating if you read the survey and you look at what the teachers are saying, what some of the parents are saying. They're getting burned out because they're not seeing, they're not getting all the help. As a school board, we have put a lot more curriculum in, and this is, this is a big deal. This is one of the biggest things. Everyone on this board has said something about student achievement for the past three years that I've been here. But yet, to take that off the budget and to just, you know, not have that money there if we need it or when we need it is just, to me, I can't pass that the way it is. I really can't unless someone can explain to me why it's not there.
Well, I think one of the things you have, one of the things that is inside our recommendations for the budget, and Mrs. Danical will be presenting at the committee of the whole meeting in April, giving another thorough deep dive into the finance presentation, is that inside of the budget is a recommendation for 13 and a half FTEs, eight of which are special education teachers. Those teachers specifically designed to really drive down our caseload numbers, not just PARRIS, but certified special education teachers.
Yes.
They are.
They are in there.
They are. They are. And that includes a, an expansion of our autistic, our life skills and our emotional support programs at elementary specifically, including an expansion of our autistic program at high school. And then, in addition to that, includes two and a half learning support teachers along with a speech pathologist as well. So, you know, our focus is really trying to drive down caseload numbers to better manage, I think, a lot of the things that you're mentioning with regard to that, to better equip all of our folks. And we certainly know the less numbers in a classroom, the better we can manage that. And we want to drive that with certified teachers in delivering that. So our focus really in working with the building administration and hearing from teachers throughout this winter was a real focus on that. Eight of those FTEs, obviously, out of the 13 and a half are designated special education.
Is that mostly elementary that they will be in?
The expansion of the three, a little bit of both. A little bit of both. The expansion of those three programs, life skills, emotional support, and autistic are mainly focused at elementary, but we do have an autistic focus at high school as well and additional learning support teachers throughout that expansion. So it's a little bit of all over at both elementary and secondary levels, but we know we're at many of our recommended limits when it comes to our caseload sizes, most especially at elementary right now, that our focus needs to be on, and it is inside this budget.
Okay. So there are no, you didn't, so you have no extra support staff in that budget, just what is existing? Or did you put like 10% more in?
So we didn't, we didn't land on a number. We do have some leeway to add in there, some PARRIS as needed. They're driven more by needs.
Right.
Some of which, we don't know some of those needs yet necessarily as we bring students in from early intervention that come into our kindergarten programs and most especially at our real primary levels. We're not necessarily sure yet, but to add those in is not problematic.
Okay.
But we do know that we need to add in those teachers from the start to really drive down our caseload numbers and to manage that a little bit more evenly and create some equity across, most especially all of our six elementary buildings right now.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. Thank you.
I want to say congratulations to Trey Escavage on his major league outing and spring training. He pitched, he pitched a shutout with these skills. Okay, let's start again. He pitched a shutout with three strikes out in the game. So that was a great job, Trey. Keep it up. Congratulations to the girls' flag football team who cut off to a good start, 2 to 0, and tonight they're playing in Havreford High School. So keep up the good work. Congratulations also to the students who participated in the Region 5 Choral Festival and Concert. Tonight, they are playing in Quakertown at the Jazz Festival. Special congratulations to Kat Maloney for receiving an outstanding soloist award. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, if I understand this correctly, we have Boyer Town Elementary HVAC project, the roof at Boyer Town Elementary, and the turf. These are all being brought about by, I think it's CNA or something. Is that correct? They're going to be handling all three of these designs, quotes, et cetera?
If you move into an agreement with regard to it, CHA, they were, they are now, the Dewey was purchased by CHA, so they, they still go by Dewey as it's a recognizable name, but it is CHA kind of slash Dewey. So they are the ones that the board did hire to investigate all three of those projects. The roof and the HVAC are somewhat tied together as they are unique in terms of the fact that, you know, one has to come before the other in terms of what types of things we're going to be placing on the roof. So they've presented over the past, I believe it's been close to a year.
Right.
On all of those projects to date, they've given you all the investigatory details surrounding that. You did move into an agreement for design and to take to bid with Dewey slash CHA for the turf field. You have not entered yet into an agreement with them for the HVAC system and roof.
My concern is to have one company do all three of these projects. I don't see how they're going to be able to do that. And I think before we asked for their PMA certificates, and I don't know that we ever got that information. I don't know if they're certified or not. I'd like to know that. And if they're going to be their clerk of the works, their firm, are they going to act as clerk of the works or are they going to hire somebody?
My suggestion would be, as we have it scheduled for our next committee of the whole meeting, is the agreement will be on that particular agenda. You already have the proposed services. We presented those at our last committee of the whole meeting and had a little bit of a discussion with regards to those. That's been updated and is in the weekly report for the board. My suggestion would be to enter into a discussion and ask all of those questions as they will be present at the meeting to make some of those determinations collectively together. You won't be voting at the committee of the whole, but you'll have an opportunity to get as deep and in depth as you care to with regard to all the questions that have come up with regard to the BES, both roof and the HVAC program. And then, a decision can be made at a voting later next month as to whether or not you choose to move into an agreement with them.
Curiosity question. Finance Report A, February 2025 General Fund Snapshot. I knew you answered this once, but why is it on the agenda if there's going to be no discussion or any, any talk around it?
It's simply there as a snapshot informational piece for you. It had been asked by the board, as I had been here for eight months and I heard it all fall, of having those accounts and where are we with various different accounts? And this is to meet the need of that, so we placed that financial snapshot of some of those accounts on there for you. So I did hear Mr. Panarelllo ask for that to be, and I think it was put up on the screen shortly.
Wouldn't it be, this is just a question, wouldn't it be more appropriate to just have that in a newsletter and not show up on the agenda since there's no intent on discussing it? Just, once again, curiosity question.
Well, as, all of that is really public information. It's there for you and it's there for our public to note the amounts. And I know this was of a larger discussion back and earlier in the fall and wanting answers as to what those certain amounts were in those accounts.
Yeah, but showing it on the agenda gives you an indication we discussed it, and that's not actually true.
No.
No, it doesn't mean that it has to be discussed. It can just be placed there as an informational item for you.
Yeah, and that's, I appreciate the informational item. I'm not sure the agenda is the right place. I think it would be more appropriate in the letter, in a newsletter, but I don't know. Mr.?
You could, you could leave it on the agenda and mark it as an informational item.
That would be fine. Okay.
All right. We'll do that.
Yes, this is just a question. Have we, do we, or do we consider working with local farms when it comes to providing food to our cafeterias? Is that something that we've ever done or that we do?
Ms. Danical?
I don't believe we currently do that, but I, we need to verify that with our food service director.
Okay.
I believe there is some work with local farms when it comes to dairy and that we do work with local dairies in regards to some of those milk dairy services, I believe.
And that's coordinated with the national school.
Yeah. We can get some more information on that. We'll check with Mrs. Clinton.
Upcoming meeting minutes or dates, I should say.
As mentioned numerous times, we do have the April 8th Committee of the Whole Meeting that will be held here in the Education Center at 7:00 PM. And we do have a legislative meeting scheduled for the 22nd, again, here at the Education Center. We do have a pretty large agenda already building for our April 8th Committee of the Whole Meeting. A number of items, including some of those that we discussed this evening, that will be part of that agenda. The board will get a lot of information in front of that as well, and I do expect, and we do have some outside presentations being made as well.
Dr. David Heiser, we got some information on the subs. I just wanted to clarify before we go out. There are seven subs that are going to be for seven sub days. Three teachers are actually going to be out for two days, so that's six subs. And there's another teacher on Friday, so that the teacher count is accurate, but it's actually the total amount of sub days to answer your question.
Thank you, Mr. Stapp.
Motion to adjourn.
Brophy, seconds.
Meeting adjourned.